I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee here on Tuesday, September 26, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the Abington Middle High School Library. If I could ask everybody to please stand to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So, it's not on here, but obviously, the events of today changed a little bit while we got to go on. So, in a minute, I'm going to pass it to the superintendent to talk about the events of today and talk about his thoughts. But first, on behalf of the committee, I just want to thank the administration, the staff, the students, everybody for how they acted, say, the fire department, the police department, surrounding communities, I'm not even positive, but I'm going to guess possibly surrounding communities as well. So, just thank you to all of them for how everybody responded today. And I'm going to give it to the superintendent to address things.
Thank you. We'd be wrong not to start by thanking the emergency responders, as our chair did, the faculty, staff, and our students also, functioning at such a high level today during today's event, which was incredibly unfortunate. And I'm sorry that it was such a stressful day. In a moment, I'm going to share how I think maybe we can relieve some stress, but I'm not certain that that will be satisfactory, because each event is different, and it really depends on how things are pulled on the ground. However, we continue to do after-action analysis, top to bottom, and we always continue to look to improve. And so, perhaps there are some things that we can do to relieve some stress. But first, I want to explain, walk through just a little bit. So, today, I was informed by police departments that there was a threat that was called in, that there were 20 bombs placed around the school buildings in Abington. We began an evacuation immediately, while the Abington Police Department and Fire Department and support from surrounding communities arrived at our buildings. The state police then arrived and provided dogs to clear out our buildings of potential threats and bombs. This takes time. They cleared the gyms and the large areas first, so that students could at least shelter in place where available. This took about an hour and 45 minutes. For all of that to occur. This time, due to a lack of communication, there were rumors that festered on social media, and we exacerbated fears. And there was no communication from the schools. That made it worse. We were focusing on the physical safety and the protocols and the internal communications around keeping people safe during a threat to multiple buildings, including the administration building, which was also evacuated. So, we actually also lost one of the ways that we control and command. But with all of those things going on, and I know you're not here to hear about good news, but the good news is that all of those internal communications, radios, those phones that we use, and the protocols that we use actually work very well. And it's under these conditions where you best test those systems. With all of the events unfolding, although a message could have been sent in an hour and 45 minutes, it's difficult to know what message could be sent at that time. You can't say it's a hoax until you know. You can't say that there's a threat and not say what it is. And you can't say, "Don't pick up your child while we're searching for potential bombs." So, if you think about what could be said, you have to be very careful that you don't create more of an hysteria around information. And it has been in the past best practice to wait until you know exactly what's going on and inform everybody. And as soon as the event cleared, we did exactly that. The moment that this building was cleared, because the dogs went throughout the district, we didn't have enough for all the buildings to go all at once. This was the last building, choosing that the older kids would be the best kids to clear last, because they were safe and positioned out around the building. And again, when the situation was resolved, and a message was sent immediately, again, not fast enough, people are scared, and it's the most important people in their lives in these buildings. And the anxiety, I think, that has been created in all of our minds over all of the news that happens throughout our country, just created a terrible situation, a fear for all of us. As I said, there will be an after-action meeting, it's already scheduled, to review the entire event from top to bottom. Upon reflection, and with help, actually, from Chris Basta, who helped us come up with some of the things that we could say in the middle of an event like this, perhaps, in the future, we'd be able to say something like, "Due to the situation that is currently being investigated by local authorities, X buildings have been evacuated out of an abundance of caution. Students are safe and under the supervision of staff. We hope to resume the school day after the situation is resolved. We will share more information as it becomes available." That might go a long way. At the same time, I can't promise you, depending on what's going on, that that would be a message that we would be able to send. And I'm just being honest with you, that depending on what's going on on the ground, situations sometimes look like they're going to clear in a moment, and then you could just get the information out there. We actually have the statement ready to go, we're just waiting for the dogs to finish up the last building. We didn't want to send that message until the dogs finished the last building, just to make sure exactly. So, I am sorry it was such a stressful day. Our training and protocols focus on the physical safety to ensure that all students and staff are safe. It didn't include emergency messaging during an event. We did not anticipate that we would have an event that would last, a hoax event that would last an hour and 45 minutes. However, to be honest and open and thoughtful and reflective, and always work to do better, some messaging during an event could have reduced fears, and we'll try our best at messaging during events in the future. Each situation is different. Thanks for giving me that opportunity to share that.
Thank you, Peter. And so, I know, I'm going to open up to hearing of visitors in a minute. The only thing I want to say, I forgot to mention before, Peter, when is that? On our agenda is a school safety update. That is more focused on meetings that took place earlier this month, kind of a recap for the committee by Julie and the administration team on what happened and steps in the near future. So, we wanted to get this part of it out of the way for many of you that are here for that reason, to talk about it there. I will open it to hearing of visitors, I will ask, you know, I generally never timed anybody. So, as long as we're pretty good, I'm not going to worry about that. But if you have, if it becomes the same thing over and over, I will close that topic to the hearing. We do have other business we have to attend to as part of this meeting as well. So, with that, if anybody would like to speak, I just ask you to go to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Okay. No, I'm not quite sure. Oh, yeah, okay.
Hi, Julie Riley, 81, Ladies, Berlin. I won up first. I'm a teacher of 22 years, I'm going to cry. This is the most stressful, anxiety-provoking experience that a teacher or a building staff can have, and I hope they'll be given some grace tomorrow as they try to get back to their day. And then, one other thing I would say, I have two fifth graders, and they were, as you talk about what your safety plan is going to be, they were housed over at the tennis courts, and through text messages and everything that I'm sure we all got, if there was an active shooter, if there were real bombs, I think we learned from Sandy Hook that children can't be, unless there's a shelter in place, and, you know, we know where the shooter or the bombs are, I suppose, they can't be sitting ducks. This is a really large campus, I don't know if going to the town hall, or the library, or down by the apartments, or out at Seon's would work better. And I just hope that those kinds of situations will be taken into consideration, and that's all.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you, Mrs. Riley.
So, in other circumstances, we have host buildings where we would send students to. In this case, all of the host buildings were evacuated, and then, because of the time, and those are great points, so I appreciate that you said those, and I agree with you about the stress. And I just also want to try to address why the students were where they were on this occasion, because all of the buildings were also evacuated. We thought about calling surrounding communities and moving students perhaps to a gym in Rockland, or Whitman, or Waymouth. But knowing at the outset, in anticipated time for the dogs to clear the buildings, we felt that we'd be able to move them in faster back to the buildings. Although, I can't say it's a hoax unless we know it was a hoax, during the event, we, you know, we had a good reason to believe it was a hoax, which also was part of the thinking, if that makes any sense.
Mrs. Riley, and also, I don't know if it was an active shooter event, there's different protocols in place, as opposed to just sitting there, it's more of a run kind of thing, or shelter in place, and then get out, like the Alice protocols that they follow, so.
Knowing that you knew it was a bomb was a lot on the front.
Yes, right.
Different than knowing it was an active shooter.
Yes, yep.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, how are you?
Good.
My name's Teresa Little, I live on Colonel Hunt Drive. Sorry, I've never known, but I do remember this. I just first wanted to say thank you to everyone at Beaverbrook. Inside the school, everyone was fabulous, the teachers, the parents, everyone organizing, it was wonderful to see it all kind of unfold. However, getting there is the trouble, right? So, there was very little communication, no communication, which is concerning to It makes sense, for the most part. However, once get, from my experience, once we got to the school, you had parents outside, a lot of parents outside waiting. At this point, we knew, or we hoped, that the school was safe, the kids were back in the school. But no one was outside communicating anything to us. So, at this point, we now have a bunch of grownups, we have the adults, outside worried, anxious, talking, saying, "Well, I heard this, well, I heard that," while we have our little people walking by, exiting the building. They're people, they hear things, they're frightened, they're scared. If I can make a suggestion, in the situation, when you have all of the grownups outside, maybe have some extra support outside to just be like, "Hey, everything's okay," you know, like calm those, that anxiety a little bit, just kind of consider the situation, how we can help everyone adjust, even if we can't make a broad statement that everything is clear, because we're still working on that last building. Kind of managing what you have in front of you, I think, might be appropriate, it might be helpful, it might make everything a little bit easier in transition, instead of having, you know, 60 grownups outside being like, "What is going on? Why can't I get in to get my kid?" So, I just wanted to say that, if that's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I guess I, and I understand a lot, and I think if there was communicate, if there was the need, the communication sent to come and pick up your child, that there's a process in place to meet at a certain place, if that areas, I understand parents showed up today. I understand, I get why they did, but it wasn't, it was an active thing in the moment, and there was no administration sent out to come and get them. I get that people did, and they were showing up, and by all means, I think everybody who came to get their child was able to take their child home. So, just the process on that, and I think, I do agree with the fact, if we know that that's going to happen, that we can get people out there, but it may have just been a case of not knowing people were going to show up, because there was no message sent to come get your child either, so. Anybody else have anything?
Hi.
Hi.
109 Dakota, 390 Groveland Street. So, I was just wondering, why didn't the elementary school be evacuated, or dismissed, such as the high schools?
So, all buildings, sorry.
I was going to say, no schools were dismissed tonight.
Oh, okay, so that was like back in folk anymore about?
No, I imagine 600 and some high schoolers, all teenagers, with their own sort of set of, like, what they can do and can't do.
Okay.
A lot of high schoolers saw the opportunity, made some phone calls, got the blessing, and got dismissed.
I will vouch, having a high schooler, that they look for every opportunity to get out of the area.
Yeah. Perfect.
So, just my concern, because my son is in kindergarten, you know, this is new to me, you know, he's sitting outside for two hours. Now, if there was, if it wasn't a hoax, you know, thank God, it wasn't, you know, anything like starting, you know, where they are is not far enough for them to be out there yet, so, but, you know, a potential bomb or anything. So, my concern is, you know, why isn't there a plan in place to remove them from, to danger zone, and then contact parents? You know what I mean? Is that something you're going to be addressing?
There is, and it's a great point. And if the weather were different, and it were colder or raining, we would have brought buses in and moved them to another community. We would have done that first, informals. Because of the nature of the threat, the decision was made, and the temperature outside, it wasn't raining, the decision was made, and this is made in conjunction with emergency responders. I mean, it's, you know, under the control of the police department, fire department, state police, that they were at safe distances, and it was safe to evacuate and hold there, and then have the dogs just to be, it was an abundance of caution, to be honest, to send the dogs. Some communities, when they've had swatting events, haven't evacuated at all, but, you know, we didn't know for sure, so we wanted to take some cautious steps to be super safe. And that, and that time created a fear, because there was no messaging and social media to vote, so.
Yeah, and my son usually takes the bus, so when I had asked, you know, I have that fast dojo thing, and I asked the teacher, "Are the buses okay, were those swept?" And she said, "I honestly don't know, but I think they wouldn't send them if they weren't." So, I definitely agree, the communication would have been better, and it was very vague when it was sent out. I mean, you never really know how to handle these situations until they happen, but definitely communication sometimes is the key to making sure everybody's okay, and that you don't run into this situation.
I hope you understand, unless you, once you, you can't say it's a hoax unless you know it's a hoax.
Yeah.
And we didn't know till the last building.
Whether it was a hoax or not, I mean, that's, you know, these are our children.
Right, yeah. And that's why we did everything we did, and I agree with you. And we also can, you know, say that you shouldn't pick up your children, or that you should pick up your children while we're, while we have dogs searching for bombs. So, that messaging is very, is very difficult to craft, and I know it seems so easy, but if you thought about sending a message to thousands of families in the middle of a crisis like this, it is, it is trickier than you think, but I get it, and we want to message as best we can in the future. I think I gave you a statement that might have worked today a little better than nothing. So, we hear that, and I just don't want to promise that it's always going to be a message in the middle of an event. We worry about your kids first, and that's, and when things are moving so quickly on the ground, we worry about your kids first, and then, and then the messaging, and that's just, that's crisis management, and I think, I've lived it a couple of times.
I agree, I mean, I've been in, I've worked in hospitals for many years, and had to do many crisis things. Just the level of communication, and not just an email that I didn't see until 2:00 in the afternoon, you know, that's, that's what killed me, because I was busy doing stuff, and, you know, not everybody, like, working parents and stuff aren't checking their emails, you know what I mean, all the time. So, that's, that was my biggest concern.
I'm glad you made that point, because you reminded me of something else. We were working on a text message system. When these things happen, you have to put it out in writing with people, because when you're doing a robo-call with something like this, there's a voice on the phone, and it's gone, and you're saying, "What did they say?", and it, and it gets booby-dabbing, and you have two or three sentences in a robo-call, whereas if you put it in writing, people can, "What did they say?", and then they have it right there.
It's clear, yeah.
So, we're trying to work on a written way to do it, through text messaging, which we don't have just yet for.
Okay, I think that's a much better idea, too. Yeah, I agree about the robo-call. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make one comment? I just want to say, so I work on a college campus, and obviously, it's different, we're talking big kids, much bigger kids, not little kids. But, you know, we take specific trainings, our communication staff have specific trainings around swatting and these types of incidents, and a lot of times, it's actually suggested that you don't send out communications, because it could invite copycat, you know, type stuff, again, different, big kids versus little kids. But my point is, I would like to ask, and I hope that any follow-up meetings about how to communicate, are you going to involve law enforcement? Because I think, like you said, you know, the chief of police is probably going to be a very important decision-maker in when and if you should be sending out communications. So, I just think it's important that they're involved.
Thank you.
Based on the situation.
Thank you for bringing that up. Exactly right. And the messaging that did go out today, we checked with the police department prior to that going.
Anybody else like to speak? Okay, I'm going to close this question, and I just want to say, I try to stay off social media as much as possible, but I do want to thank the three of you for the way you went about and handled and spoke to us tonight, so thank you very much. Up next is the reading and approval of record of minutes from our last meeting on August 30th. After you have a chance to review, I'll be looking for a motion to approve them, either amended or as presented.
I was, I was still accusing myself.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
A second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And you're abstaining, right?
Right.
So, up next, report of the Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. I'm just going to go right to Mrs. Poirier for the art department update first.
My name's Michelle Poirier, I'm the art director of K through 12, and this is just an update on the art department. So, starting with the strengths of the department, we continue to offer all students grades K through 8 in art education, and any student in the high school who elects it can take an art class. We have two new art educators in the district, we have a first-year teacher for the Beaverbrook and Woodsdale, and a second-year teacher for shared staff of middle school and high school. And in addition, we have three full-time professional status educators, one in the middle school and two at the high school. We still do the district-wide art shows, Youth Art Month is at the Public Library in March, and then the Celebrate the Arts Festival, 5 through 12 in May, which we're going to try to do together this year, so it'll be at 5 through 12 again, all at the same time, leading into like the spring concert, which we had a great turnout for last year. This kind of just demonstrates the evidence of high-quality work, perseverance in the students, their effort, their engagement in the art department. They create really beautiful artwork that we like to put on display. Also, the enrollment in art classes at the high school has steadily been increasing, and I'll show you the numbers in a next slide. So, it just shows that there's been, you know, with the addition of the halftime staff, that we can increase offerings at the high school, which has been really great for our students. Areas of growth that we established last year are still kind of the areas of growth this year. So, we still haven't been able to dedicate an art room at the Woodsdale, because of the class sizes there, and we hadn't been able to increase our part-time middle school, high school teacher to full-time. So, to increase the high school position to full-time, we could accommodate more advanced digital art classes. So, right now, she teaches Digital Art 1, which is an introduction to digital art, so we don't have the staff right now to include an advanced class of that. We also have some scheduling issues between middle school and high school, kind of the rotation of the class periods, that this has been kind of, you know, something we had to work through this year. And also, if she were to be full-time, she could participate in the common planning time, because as it is right now, she teaches at the end of the day, and our common planning time is at the beginning of the day. So, can't quite, you know, work with the other art department teachers on late week Wednesdays. And there's still for, you know, we can't create space, but a need for a dedicated art room. In addition to that, we've also found it's been kind of tricky that, you know, the schedule at Woodsdale, that classes end and start at the same time. So, it's been kind of a challenge this year for transition times, both for the art teacher and for the teachers who need their prep time, you know, that there's not like passing time that we have at the high school. So, that's been kind of a new challenge, especially for a new teacher this year. So, the art department curriculum, we focus on really four main visual art standards, creating artwork, presenting artwork, responding to each other's work, and then connecting with their artwork themselves. This year, as a department, we're focusing on their intention in their artwork, so not just creating something to, you know, make something, but to really put themselves into it, you know, and have an intention behind their artwork. So, the whole department is kind of working on that all together. These are the high school courses that we offer, so you can see there's kind of three separate sections of art. We have 2D art, 3D art, and digital art. They all have kind of the same structure, an introduction class, and an advanced class, that's a full year, and then we have AP Studio Art. At the bottom, you can see the digital art classes, we don't have those advanced classes offered, because we don't have enough staff currently at the high school. So, we have the semester classes, which are very popular, but then no advanced section of it after that. These are some numbers over the last seven or so years of how many arts, students at the high school are electing art classes. So, on average, about 300 to 350 students are electing a class per year. The intro classes are the most popular, but you can see they've steadily been increasing. So, you know, if we were to offer more advanced classes, I can imagine those numbers could, you know, increase even more. So, you know, they're very popular classes at the high school that kids want to be in. So, this is kind of how the high school schedule breaks down, we have four sections each of drawing, painting one, digital art one, and sculpture one, two sections each of drawing, painting two, and sculpture two, and no sections of the advanced digital art and advanced graphic design. Now, this is the AP art data for the last, you know, few years. We don't have many students enroll in the program, just because it's a really rigorous and difficult art program, and I think they, they get a little bit more out of the general education, and they get a little bit more breadth in the subject. You can see when they do enroll, they do do very well. Last year, we had two students, one got a four, and one got a three, which is right along with the mass averages. We have one taking it this year, who I imagine will do very well, and they're in the same classes as the advanced drawing and painting students, so they are still all together, just kind of doing their own thing at the same time. And that's it for the department.
Could the students do AP as an independent study? I can't remember what two were up there that were not able to run, are there courses that would require instruction, or could they do that independently?
Oh, for the digital art, too. We've kind of done that before in the past, kind of having the advanced students with the intro classes, and it's not quite the same level of hands-on interaction with the teacher. You know, the teacher could kind of give them projects, and they can do them, but, you know, you don't quite have the same, like, you know, class engagement, you don't have the critiques, and everyone kind of working on the project. And the intro classes are a little bit more instruction-focused, so the teacher is very involved with the students, a lot.
Would they have the skill set, though, to be able to be in the classroom, working on their own thing without needing, I guess that's my question, without needing the instruction?
I think they would have the skill set, though not necessarily advance those skills even more than what they already have. You know, I think they could keep practicing their skills, and there have been some independent studies in those classes, especially for independent studies, we like to have it as a class that we don't offer, you know, so students will do like, children's book illustration on the computer, or like fashion photography, or something like that, something they're really interested in. But we haven't quite done just like the next level in the same kind of classrooms, because it's, there's also like a limit on the computers, so we like to fill up the amount of stations for the intro kids, so they could work on their computers, but it's, you know, smaller screen, a little bit different.
No, it's a lot on the features to take that on, so that's not necessarily an incredible situation. And then, I just wanted, this is kind of overall for all of the departments. As a teacher, I'd be super curious to hear, I'd love to hear about professional practice goals and student learning goals. I didn't know, you had mentioned, I love seeing that you guys are focusing on intent for this year, and I didn't know if that was worked into, for the teachers, for their professional practice goals, and then, does that tie into the student learning goals?
So...
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Oh, that's okay.
It was just kind of like...
We talked more about the intent as, you know, during common planning, and if we're in like, you know, department-based PD, our goals are more in line with teaching Yale students this year, and kind of learning different technologies and resources to kind of get better instruction for teaching students of different language backgrounds in our classes. So, that's kind of our team student learning goal this year, and our professional practice is kind of just like, you know, doing an SEI course, and kind of feeding those resources with other colleagues on how to get better at doing that. So, we kind of talk about it a little bit more informally with the intent, just kind of like in the background of like always be pushing this, but not quite as a student learning goal.
Okay. Is that something that we could maybe work in for some of the department? I just, I love hearing that, so, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
All right. Hi.
Hi.
I know that you said that your Level 1 classes are very popular, which I imagine they are.
they are. If you're looking long-term to eventually have the advanced classes, what are your Level Two enrollment numbers looking like right now as opposed to the Level Ones? Is it, are your classes fairly full, or?
So like the Digital Art One right now, you can, it's 21 students, so it's two periods of 21 twice a semester. So four sections of that. And so you would have, like, the Digital Art Two is full year. So it's about 21 kids a year for the Digital Art Two. And then you can take that class multiple times. So you can take that class, you know, three years in a row if you wanted to. So that's why we've kept it at keeping it two sections of Digital Art One, because it allows more students access to the crib room than just the advanced kids getting in.
Well, and I was gonna say, I know that there are plenty of kids who wanted to get into it, but scheduling is always tricky. So.
And the more kids that take the intro class, the more are gonna ask for it every year, you know, so that number will keep growing.
So we are looking at room for.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Mrs. Poria, I wanted to hit on, it was the Woodsdale thing, and I think I know, but I guess it's more in case people don't. So in Beaverbrook, there is a dedicated class, just a dedicated art classroom that students go to when they have art. But at Woodsdale, due to the number of kids and the number of classrooms that are needed, it's the art teacher is basically going classroom to classroom for now and teaching art in that, in their classroom, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Do we still have them taking a cart up and downstairs, or has that been rectified?
There's two carts, but.
There's two carts.
Top floor and bottom floor cart, yeah.
Yeah, we all know it's not, it's not ideal. It kind of is, but the numbers, at Woodsdale, the number of classrooms. And so I just wanted to clarify for anybody who didn't know what that was.
That reminded me, I had one more question. Issue with scheduling, is that gonna be fixed for next year with the arrival and departure time?
I don't know. I've just heard about that kind of recently at our last in-service day. So like if the class ends at 10:30, the next one starts at 10:30.
Yep.
And it could be on the floor below, it could be, you know, somewhere not nearby. So it's the first time I have heard of that.
The first time I've heard of this issue, so I'm glad to hear it. And we certainly will by checking with these other specialists at Beaverbrook. The specialists at Beaverbrook, it's all contemplated, asked to take out passing time. Because they said it was better for them to manage it themselves when they started when they ended. But if it's not working for art, that's something that.
I think it's more at Woodsdale than Beaverbrook.
Pretty sure.
Thank you.
So I love coming into this facility, because you see the kids' artwork, at least in the places where people are congregating, you see so many different types of artwork, and I think that's beautiful. I'm curious, I think Beaverbrook and Woodsdale have their own art up on the walls, but I wonder if it would be motivating to children if they saw middle school and high school art products in their facilities as well to say, wow, like a fifth grader did that, look what I can do. I don't know if we've ever explored that, if we even have space in the facilities to hang more art, but it might be an interesting opportunity to keep kids engaged at the under levels, especially in Woodsdale when it's art on the cart. How it might be a little bit limited in what they're working on while they're at Woodsdale.
Yeah, it's a good idea. Thank you.
So I'm jumping even on that. The power of kids seeing their own work displayed and taking pride in it, with the Student Art Month. I very, very vividly remember the days when only a couple of kids from each class would have things on display, and the art department in the last several years made the shift to having every child have something and seeing the pride, not just for the kids, but for their families and what you're creating. To hear that you're also wrapping that into how you can best serve all of the students, that's a testament to some hard work. So thank you.
Thank you.
Art on the cart, man. That's rough.
Thank you, Mrs. Poria.
Thank you.
Personal finance?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yep.
On the opening act, Mr. Born.
That works.
So, good evening, everybody. Most students around the country are not learning about personal finance at home. 2017 T. Rowe Price survey noted that only 23% of youth surveyed indicated that they talked to their parents frequently about money, and 35% stated that their parents are uncomfortable talking to them about money. Here at Abington High School, students are exposed to elements of financial literacy in a few of our elective courses, as well as the end-of-year Credit for Life event. We believe there is research and community and staff support for incorporating more financial literacy into the school experience for all seniors, as we discussed a little bit in the past. Mr. Born will now discuss the pilot approach we're developing this year here at the high school.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you, Chris, for that introduction. As a community asked us to explore options for personal finance, as Dr. Bostia mentioned, every stakeholder and adult we talked to kind of gave a very obvious nod and said, yes, makes sense. I'll even tell you, laypeople I talk to outside of schools say, yes, it makes sense. So I think the community at large, whether that's Abington or Portland, Maine, or Portland, Oregon, agree, this is an area that a lot of young people need some development in. Pardon me. We kind of grappled with the structure, the how and the when this might take place. We do have a personal finance class that many of our students do take, either as juniors or seniors. To have that be a common or graduation requirement for every kid would be quite a shift in our staffing model and program of studies. We also thought timing-wise, again, a student could take that first semester junior year all the way up to last semester senior year. It's really ideal to capture our students on the way out of high school, when these topics and lessons are kind of our last best chance, and when they are really salient to important choices they're gonna make regarding student loans, purchasing their first or vehicle for work, starting work, a variety of different items. So with that, what you have in front of you in a memo is kind of a draft notion of some ideas and topics that would be covered. A credit to Ms. Doherty in the math department, who would take on the quote-unquote ownership of this work, happening after April break, probably in math classes. As many who know high school, after April break, senior year, there's a bit of a negotiation and tug-of-war of figuring out what we keep students grapple to. But what we can set up are a series of common learning expectations for all seniors to go through. And I'll speak to the AP classes, because they actually still go through mid-May, so their journey might happen after that. But for most seniors, this would happen starting after April break in quarter four. And you can see some of the topics listed below. So the math department will be handling, as the finance piece goes, strictly the number crunching component of this, and feathering in the personal part of personal finance, the social, psychological aspects of money and how people interact with money. To that end, we are really gonna have our students and want our students to communicate with home, to have some money conversations with parents that aren't like evaluated as much as recommend, talk to your folks. We're also gonna need help from the community, and I imagine some of our community partners would be great and willing to come in during Bridge Blocks to speak to students in a seminar session. Things, for example, like the difference between credit and debit. We know we can rely on some of our local banks to come in and speak to some of those topics for our kids, as well as pulling in other community members that have good life lessons. So we're hoping some combination of classes they take, either Life 101, Academic Support 1112, Personal Finance, this program and some Bridge Blocks, will really line them up nicely to have a pretty robust personal finance experience on the way out. And a credit to Ms. Howell, who's our business teacher and our personal finance teacher, and Ms. Daisy, who teaches Life 101. They've generally done a culminating senior activity called Credit for Life, and that is where the students enter a full-day simulation as to life post-high school, the cost of what they anticipate a salary to be, renting, do you have roommates, do you buy, do you card, do you rent a card, do you commute, do you live at home. And then they have like the Wheel of Misfortune, where they throw a little life at them and see how they're gonna handle different things. Tends to be a lot of fun. It lines itself up nicely to be a nice culminating activity for our students. And so we're trying to weave in some of the structures and concepts that exist, and making sure we're hitting all kind of the key points. This isn't an exclusive list. We would like to be working with some of the folks who are gonna be delivering this, to build curriculum, structure, content, the how, the when, the where. So this will be filtered into or covered in, from a grading standpoint, the math, as mentioned, the math courses to grade to kind of put some stickiness to it. But it really is to have that common learning experience for all our kids right before graduation. We don't have any questions or thoughts.
Just a comment. As I mentioned before, I work on a college campus. I work in the HR department, and I see that you have taxes in your paycheck on here. My biggest pain point, because we obviously process student workers that, you know, work on campus, is the tax forms. So this is amazing, because they just have absolutely no idea. Like, we can't advise them the tax forms, we're not tax experts, but they don't, you know, they don't know what to do, they don't understand their paycheck, they don't understand how to look at it, what they're getting paid. So that, that is great.
Thank you.
That's much needed.
Thank you.
Mr. Born, those are your comments and questions. I just want, so before, I just wanna say thanks for listening to the community, for the committee, and to the administration for looking to get this implemented as best it can and start off. So thank you.
Thank you.
We already had our conversation, so thank you. You know, I'm proud.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
It's huge. Huge.
I echo, I'm very excited. I'm curious, I see the word enrichment and opportunity in here. And I'm curious, does this encompass everyone, or will there be students who won't have the opportunity because they have, you know, therapies or something like that that's gonna come to them? There are populations of students that maybe will miss with this first pass, knowing that this is a pilot program.
There may be some students that don't get the full, like, the total experience, pardon me. So through math classes, every kid will have the same or similar experience in their math classes topically. We may have, I'm just throwing this out there, I don't need to commit Abington Bank to anything, but we may have them come in on a Thursday to talk about, during Bridge Block, to talk about how to open a checking account or high interest savings account. Some students may be obviously absent. We also, that time of year, some students may need to be with an English or history teacher to do the work they need to graduate. So we would excuse them from things of that nature. The Credit for Life, not every student participates, but I think we would be suggesting and recommending that they all do this. I don't think we can require, but we can lean that way. So in those cases, some students might miss out on some of those enrichment opportunities where we have either like a guest speaker on a topic, or someone from the community coming.
That's great. One thing I didn't see on the list is security and fraud, and I think that as kids explore finances on their own, it's something to be aware of. So I'm actually not all too singless, but it might be something to take into consideration with identity theft and all of that. And then the Credit for Life, I participated in that program at a bunch of schools from when I was in banking. It's an awesome program. If we have the opportunity to make that highly encouraged for our kids, it's like a game changer, being on the other side and seeing the kids' faces when they realize, when they spin the wheel and they realize what happens. Or they can win the lottery. And then when they go and pick out their car, and they're like, I can't have a Ford F-150, why not? I think that's incredible. So I'm really excited. I hope that the community involvement is publicized early and often. I think myself, like, there's a lot of people out there who want to help. I think just advancement application will be key.
Thank you. We're, to that point, we're gonna try to move quickly and have things, hopefully, like, deliverable or at least announceable in January, February. We are gonna miss topics, we are gonna miss things. And I think as a pilot, please know if we do and say, oh, I know someone who's excellent at, let us know if there's, like, I'm gonna make a note about the security piece, and Miss Groom about the actual tax form. It's something that, like, we're honestly just talking about taxes. You pay them. Oh, you know what I mean? So like, as far as the form goes, we can definitely go to that next layer and show the difference of withholdings and things of that nature. But thank you. And those are kind of some of the inputs, because we want to have that harmonized with what folks at home are hoping and also talking to their kids about as well. Thank you so much, Mr. Born.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Bostia, the math curriculum update?
One more time. So you probably recall, last year, our fifth through 12th grade math committee reconvened after taking a hiatus during the COVID years. And all math teachers, five through 12, piloted one of the programs that the committee was reviewing in the spring, and that was called illustrative math. Over the summer, some members of the committee met with representatives from several other publishers to determine two more programs to pilot this fall. The teachers selected Envision Math, which is currently in place, K6, and Into Mathematics. Envision Math will be piloted by all five to 12 teachers, math teachers, between now and November. And then Into Mathematics will be piloted November to about middle, maybe end of January. The committee will then make a recommendation for program adoption from these three choices: illustrative math, envision math, and into mathematics, for adoption in the 24, 25 school year. Thank you to all the teachers who have been thoughtfully investigating which of these programs best meets the needs of our students. And I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will definitely be back for an update after the first, the second pilot is completed in November. But, question?
Just out of curiosity for the surrounding communities, does it seem like out of those three is one used more than the others, or are all districts kind of doing their thing?
Yeah, more of the latter. There's not a consensus, there's not even a majority. And there are so many newer programs than pre-COVID that are out there right now. These are the three that the committee believes most aligns with the needs of our students and the professional development that we've been working on for the last three or so years with a consultant regarding the building Thinking Classrooms text, which is focused on, well, you saw last year, Ms. Doherty gave us that example of how to work together on a problem on a vertical space, right? So these three programs, we think align best with that program and those concepts in that book and the needs for students.
And then I'm sure one will probably rise to the top, but what happens if all three are equal?
If all three are?
Equal.
Equal?
If the teachers, as they pilot it, if they all kind of.
Then we go into deep negotiations. And my job is to make sure no one is completely happy, and we compromise.
Nailed it.
I'm sure one will be.
So elementary currently uses Envision. How much longer do we have on that?
So Envision, the license expires this year.
That's what I thought.
And our plan is to secure another year or two license, so that we can let the dust settle here, five, 12, and then do this all over again in elementary committee. It's possible that it lines up, and the elementary committee wants to stick with Envision, and we have that as a uniform program, if that's the one that's selected.
Have the teachers, like particularly grade five and six, had a chance to talk with the math, people running the math curriculum, particularly with Envision right now, to find out, they can clearly get a little more insight?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why it's one of the three.
There it is. All right.
Initially, the seven through 12 folks weren't interested in Envision, but they saw the new version that's being used in five and six and the rest.
Okay.
And the kids who have used, I can't remember how long we've been, sorry for interrupting.
No.
Using it, are the kids who started with it at the high school yet, are the teachers at the high school seeing kids who have gone through the Envision program?
I think they're there. And some of the, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, you finish it off.
Because I know that you were looking at some of these are, we know that Envision has the younger component. What about the other two? Do they have a component that skews for the younger grades as well?
They do. Although, there's nothing that says we have to have.
Right. Just wondering if we are looking for the continuity. Is it available, or? Okay, thank you.
Forgive me if everyone else does this and I don't, but I'm gonna ask the question in case anyone out there doesn't know. When you say that teachers are piloting a program, does that mean that they're doing this apart from the students, or are the students now hopping curriculum to curriculum?
So what they have done as a team, a grade-level team, they've looked at the units that they're scheduled to teach based on our scope and sequence with the programs they're using currently, and they've selected one unit as a grade level to pull out and use the Envision correlating here. So, so yes, the students are experiencing a different program for one unit this year, and then another unit in a few months.
I wonder if they, they know this. I wonder if they have feedback.
We definitely ask for feedback from students and families. One of the programs that we're not piloting, but it was on the list for us to look at in the spring, I had experience at home as a dad. And I was like, oh, no, that's. And I was like, oh, no, that's a, the platform that we use at home is way too difficult for families to navigate with their, with their kids. So, so any feedback from students and families is helpful.
Well, thank you.
Chris, I should quick one. So it was more about the time. You said Envision is being piloted now and through November?
Yeah.
And then Intu Math starts in the end, whenever that ends, until when?
About January.
Okay.
Middle of January.
Okay.
Well, because this is for FY '25.
Yeah.
We'll have to put in a placeholder in the budget.
Got you.
Because we start that process in November. And then by the time comes time in April, we would definitely have a decision.
A decision. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Basso. Up next, Mr. McCarty, with consideration of an out-of-state field trip to Philadelphia for the Abington Middle School grade eight students on June 6th through the 8th of 2024.
Thank you. I'm being nice seeking approval for this field trip from the committee. This is a field trip that has run aside from COVID years for some time in Abington. We got back to it last year and we had a great long weekend tour in Philadelphia with grade eight students. Last year, we had roughly 110 students go. We have 142 in our grade eight class, and I would anticipate at least 110 this year, knowing that some students last year having not had older students to talk to about the trip chose not to go. But the excitement that threw around last year's trip was palpable, so I think we'd have even more. Cost of this year's trip will be $837. That's a raise to the cost of last year's trip. I did speak with travel agent about that, and the answer I received was that there were anticipated rises in busing, which I think we've all experienced in other places, and also previously anticipated rises in the cost of lodging for the trip itself. We typically conduct some fundraising. The eighth grade students are able to sell these and other Christmas items for a company called Mickman Brothers. And for every wreath or Christmas item they sell, they receive money off of their trip this fundraising. Mickman sends that to them. There's also candy bar sales that they run. And we run a T-shirt fundraiser where local businesses contribute to helping families who may have difficulty affording the full cost of the trip with some financial aid that we're able to provide through that process. Any questions who may have?
Just a comment. I can't believe that you still want to do this. That's so awesome for the kids.
I love it. I love it. Would I spend four years with these kids? And I get to know them sometimes more in those three days than I have in the previous four years. And I wish maybe we did it earlier, but it's also such a great culminating experience for their middle school career before I send them off to Mr. Born.
I love that you.
Freshman.
I love that you do it at the very end. I know some other districts that do it sooner and the kids check out the second they get back from that trip. So I am glad for that timeframe and appreciate that you run this trip. It's such a great experience for our kids. So thank you.
And as a parent who had someone miss their opportunity because of, you know, COVID, sending the second child on the trip, I, I think you can safely say there are a lot of lessons to be learned for these kids in going away with, well, an entire class of same age kids. It is a very valuable life experience for those who decide to participate.
And as, speaking to a mom, I do insist on our students on this trip texting you multiple times a day to let you know that they're breathing and alive and having a good time.
Whether or not they listen to that admonition, yes. But still, it's, if people really wonder why, you know, why Philly, why, why send kids on a trip? I, I didn't realize the power of the life lessons that they would get from it. And, you know, maybe not all roses and cheery and hey, this is the best day ever, but it was an impactful day sometimes for some of these kids, especially coming into a time where a lot of them have not had a chance to travel or leave their families for a little bit. So thank you for affording the opportunity, because not every school does this with kids this age. So it is, it was definitely life lessons.
You got some questions? I don't. I'm looking for a motion to approve the out-of-state field trip to Philadelphia for the Abington Middle School grade eight students from June 6th to 8th, 2024.
I'll make the motion. I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Report, the Director of Student Services. James, you want me just, you want me just take care? So there's a homeschool request here. If anybody has any questions, Dr. Robinson, get up to the podium, but I know there's generally not too many to ask. So if there aren't any questions, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the additional home education programs for this school year, as is recommended by Dr. Robinson in the packet.
I'll make a motion.
Second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll say, James. Thank you. So up next is a report from the Superintendent of Schools. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to start with the school safety update. So Julie's going to be part of this as well, as she was the school committee's rep on some of those meetings. So I'm going to pass it on to you.
And I'm, thank you. Quickly, I'm going to, I'm going to ask Ms. Groom to, Ms. Groom to provide more information on it. Just, you know, I know we already talked a lot about what happened today. I just want to mention today as an example of how you need to continually look to change and do better, because people that want to do harm to other people are continually coming up with new ways and things for us to worry about. And so this committee, over the last, what's her name? Little over a year, has had really productive conversations about a variety of things. We even touched on, you know, the lead and copper testing of water to the temperature we had at the start of the school year and our classrooms and environment, to obviously other things that we've fallen off the national stage and communities are struggling with, the horrific, terrifying things that can occur. So I promise it's been great and I just kept going, so I apologize.
So I just joined the committee, so I'm only at one meeting, so you've kind of covered the scope. No, it's fine. The scope of what I have been involved in. But like you said, you know, we talked a lot about temperature and, you know, the reasonableness around putting air conditioners in or not, you know, fans, that type of thing. We talked about some camera upgrades and fixes that will be happening, you know, protocol around letting people into buildings, that type of thing. And really, a lot of the meeting was talking about our agenda and what we want to accomplish in the coming year and getting, you know, maybe the police involved in some of our meetings just to, to work with us. So I think I'm just saying. Safety rockers, yeah, we talked about those, which I have not been part of, but would like to do this year, but, you know, going through each school and just having different people be able to see what sort of safety issues they see or hazards. So plan to meet, you know, every four to six weeks. So we're, I'm here.
Thank you, Shawna. Thank you for reaching out and looking at it. Does anything you wanted to add? You can, you feel free to report it now, or it's up to you. Yes.
So Shawna Torfee, 30 Pine Tree Lane. I just want to say thank you so much for everybody that was involved today. I know it was a super stressful day on the side of the house too, with the parents. And I think it was, it was great overall. I agree with you and thank you for saying that about the timely communication, because I think that would really help in the future. And I understand both sides of the right. I understand you can't say too much too early, but, you know, in this day and age with phones and little kids have watches and then social media, a lot can kind of spiral out of control quickly. And so, you know, waiting too long, you know, you're on, you're on a different, you're on a different issue, right? Like where rumors are happening and people are just getting very antsy. So I just want to say thank you for that. And I think next time, you know, having some type of communication from that earlier would be great. I also want to say there's been a lot on social media, a lot. And I just urge everyone that's on social media that has something to say, like, come to these meetings and say something, right? Like, have your voice heard. And these are the people that can help you change it. So like, show up and actually, you know, if you want to see something changed, don't just sit on social media. Actually come here, say what you have to say, talk to the people that can change it, talk to this group and see how we can kind of progress and make things better if you're not happy with it. So just want to say that. And again, thanks to everybody.
Thank you, Shawna.
To the, to the plea for social media. Newsflash, not everything you read on social media is true. So you can also pick up the phone or send an email and contact the school. Some, at some point over the last couple of months, somebody was looking for a lost child and they went out on social media. They received my child, they could just miss it. Why in the world you wouldn't call the school and ask the school, I don't know. They, they, they had more faith in, I think they call it X now, than calling the school or Twitter, you know? Just, so please reach out to us also. You know, we're there to answer questions. We benefited from much improved coverage with our school resource officers. I think that's because the department is, is better staffed than it was last year. It was never because the department didn't want to cover us to the, to, to whatever extent they can. When you're deploying precious resources to keep the community safe, there are, the community has a number of needs in different places. And there were different events at a place in town, whether it was a traffic accident or, or whatever might be going on where people were pulled. That's happening much, much less. And we appreciate it because working with the police department and the fire department keeps us all as safe as we can be.
Thank you. Up next, Assistant Superintendent and Director of Finance and Operations Job Description. It's under yours, but I know.
And I'll keep it really brief.
Okay.
I'm going to be leaving at the end of this year.
The school year.
End of the school year. And Felicia, Felicia will be in the superintendent's role next year. Her job will change and functions and structures within the school department need to change with it so that we can meet the needs of the school department and the students we serve. And so these two job descriptions are about that transition. I know they're going to mention this, it does not add staff. And Felicia's going to explain what their transition looks like.
Thank you. You have in front of you two new job descriptions, one for an Assistant Superintendent and one for Director of Finance and Operations. Currently, as you know, as the superintendent, as the superintendent, as the Assistant Superintendent, wow, that is a role. As the Assistant Superintendent.
You start tonight.
As the Assistant Superintendent, I have a number of roles as the Assistant Superintendent. And I also fulfill the role as the business official for the school department. The proposal that you have in front of you is to take the business official responsibilities out of the Assistant, current Assistant Superintendent job description and make a Director of Finance and Operations. In doing that, taking the current Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, eliminating that position and putting those responsibilities under the Assistant Superintendent. So it would be a more traditional, if you will, Assistant Superintendent that has a number of Assistant Superintendent roles and also oversees curriculum instruction and assessment. So there, as Peter said, there's no increase to the number of, of people. It's taking one director, Director of CIA, and making it a Director of Finance. And it also is not anticipated to have any financial impact either, because again, we're not increasing the number of people, we're shifting responsibilities. So we have two, we have the new updated proposed job descriptions for the Assistant Superintendent and the Director of Finance and Operations.
Felicia, thank you guys. One question, I guess first off, I do want, and I think this is okay if I say this, I do want to let the committee know, if you, it doesn't have, these positions don't have to be approved in tonight. If we're not approved as is tonight, I would just ask, discuss with Felicia over the course of the next month so that in October we can, so we can get a proper timeline in place to hire these positions. But if everybody, if we're okay voting them in tonight as a thing, then that's great too. Felicia, the only other thing I just want to, it's more, I guess, try to just define it all. I know you mentioned that with this creation, that the role of the, the role, Director of Curriculum Instruction and Assessment will no longer be a role, correct?
Correct.
Will the Director of Student Services still be?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
There'll be no change.
Okay.
Can I also, may I also add? I also want to say that for both of these positions, we plan to do a search, do a posting on School Spring, have an interview committee, interview and make a, and have a recommendation for the superintendent. So, sorry, Dr. Basso, I just have to say, Dr. Basso's job is being reorg, his position is being eliminated and there'll be an Assistant Superintendent that has those responsibilities. So if Dr. Basso were interested in the position, there will be a whole search and with members of the community, members of the committee, teachers, administrators that will be on the search for both of these positions.
When you say that, you know, the recommendation to the superintendent, to you and Peter or to you as major superintendent?
Good question. I think, yeah, it's Peter's appointment.
But I already listen a lot. Listen a lot more.
Yeah.
Thank you for the transparency on that, because I, there is no good way to ask that question, so that helps. This is more in line with what, this is what it used to look like previously, correct? More, if we're going back.
Previous.
Eight or nine years ago before, I feel like this was almost what we had and then we were structured.
So previous, previous.
Yes.
There was an Assistant Superintendent of Student Services and Assistant Superintendent of Budget and Finance.
Okay.
And then we also had, at that time, a K6 Director of Curriculum.
Okay.
And then we did a reorganization, did a K-12 Director and one Assistant Superintendent.
And is this more in line with how you're saying with other, how, how other districts do this?
It's not, this, the proposal is not an uncommon model.
Okay.
At all.
And the other districts?
Some districts have Assistant Superintendent of Fin, sorry, Finance and Operations and some it's a Director.
And if I could, to really understand what other districts are doing, you have to actually look at the job description, because titles can deceive.
Correct.
That's any job, trust me.
It's a native job.
How does the committee feel about, if they review it, and feel about voting these in tonight to approve these two positions?
I'm kind of looking at the position. I just have a question on how it changes the candidates that you're looking for. If you were to fill your current role as it stands, versus if you were to fill an Assistant Superintendent as this reads, is this Assistant Superintendent more recently in curriculum, in a teaching position or a principal position, as opposed to your position, which maybe has more business administration background?
That's correct.
Okay. All right.
So I think, are we okay then? Both of them? All right. We vote together? Motion, all motion? Okay, I'll do it separately. Yeah, that's fine. So I'll be looking for a motion to approve the Assistant Superintendent position as presented in the packet by Dr. Michella.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then likewise, I'll be looking for a motion to approve the position of Director of Finance and Operations as presented in the packet.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I just want to add, I'll be looking, when the time comes for the search, I'll be looking for probably just one school committee member on each, since it's going to be two different things. So if you're interested, let me know and probably by October, we can let Felicia Peter know who that'll be, know who that'll be. All right.
Thank you.
Felicia, it's yours next anyway, so.
Oh, right.
School Department Development Article Planning Schedule.
So in your packet, you have the calendar for the budget development. It's hard to believe that we're four weeks into the school year, we're talking about the next school year, but we have to start planning for next the next school year, but we have to start planning for next year's FY '25 budget. In the, in October, department heads and directors and principals will be receiving, will be receiving budget packets from my office. Budgets will be due back by the, at the end of November, and we will have between the end of November and our January 9th school committee meeting, at least one, if not numerous meetings, with principals, department heads, and directors to put together a preliminary budget to share with the budget and finance subcommittee. We'll meet with the budget and finance subcommittee, again, towards the end of December, and then there'll be a preliminary budget on January 9th. We have a preliminary budget hearing scheduled for January 9th. And then you can see the rest of the calendar, January through April, it's meeting with finance committee, possibly the board of selectmen, budget and finance subcommittee, giving presentations to the school committee, and leading up to, and the town leadership, and leading up to town meeting, which we don't have a date yet for the springtime.
I was going to say, so, just so people know, the town meeting that's scheduled in two weeks does not, it's not part of our budget, it's not something being talked about, they just, everybody knows that. And generally speaking, the town meeting used to be late May, but with the new town meeting, it's just been pushed up to early April most of the time now, so everything gets condensed in terms of planning. Does anybody have any questions on the timeline of this? It's pretty standard, pretty standard to where we know these bank accounts, so. We're looking for a motion to approve the fiscal year 2025 school department budget development and article planning schedule as presented by Dr. Michella.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And next up is the strategic planning update that I think you're going to talk with Melanie about, too, right? Both of you going to kind of-
Correct. Yep.
Okay. Melanie is our, the school committee's liaison with the strategic planning committee.
You want to do an intro?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, we spoke about it at the last school committee meeting, the Avenue Public Schools is engaging in a strategic planning process this school year. We're looking to develop a five-year strategic plan that will lead the district for the next five years. So we have a group of about 25 stakeholders, if you will, teachers, parents, administrators, school committee members, we have a member of the board of selectmen. We had our first meeting a week and a half ago, and we will meet another four times this fall to develop a strategic plan, and then it'll be shared out widely, and then we'll spend the spring looking at activities and how we, how we will accomplish those, our strategic planning goals.
Yeah, I think the strategic plan is all about alignment, ensuring that we understand what our needs are and how to prioritize funding, time, you know, how do we make each school's, school council move toward the same direction that our overall district wants to learn, to ensure that there's alignment between all of the different disparate schools. I think we do a decent job of that. I think we do a great job holding our schools accountable for the plans that they have, the goals and their attainment, but this will help kind of coalesce that into one district-wide plan. And I think at this point, the committee is very interested in feedback from all stakeholders. That includes people who have children in the school and people who are part of our community. So I think, you know, you can always email me, call me for feedback. I think the same is true with a lot of the committee members, so the more information, feedback, and perspective we have, the better we can make a strategic plan for the next five years that really takes us to where we want to be.
Thank you. You led right into my next statement. So our la, our first meeting with the, with the strategic planning group was titled "Envisioning the Future." So we had, we spent the morning looking at where we are today and where we want to be in five years, and, which would be June 30th, 2029, which is also a little bit scary. So yesterday, an email was sent out through the district's constant contact to all people who sent it for constant contact, asking, it was a strategic planning survey, asking those things that you would like to see, what you like about the Avenue Public Schools, things you'd like to see improved in the Avenue Public Schools. Our staff also received the same survey yesterday. I encourage everybody to please complete it. The more voices we have, the better. If you didn't receive it, you can call our office and we can, oh, it's on the website, too, so you can access it via the website. In the coming days, we're also going to be asking students in grade seven through 12 a similar, the similar questions, but not, maybe not as in-depth as we, we're asking the community, but to get input from our students in grade seven through 12 as well. If, if a student does want to complete it, they don't have to complete it, but student voice is also important in this process. So I want to thank all of those that have been involved, and if you have ideas, you have thoughts, like Melanie said, reach out to any one of us, you know, any one of the, any members of the school committee or administrators, and your feedback is very valuable, always, and especially in this process.
Thank you both. Melanie, is there anything else looking forward to hearing, everything that comes up? Is there anything?
I just, I like the backward design on this.
Back to the future program, I was trying to, I was reading it, it was going along.
Impressive backward design, though. I like that.
Yep.
And my kids watch Back to the Future, like, wait a minute, there's supposed to be flying cars right now? I'm like, yeah, don't, don't believe it. So thank you both. Melanie, thank you for volunteering, I appreciate it. Up next on our agenda was the MASC resolutions. We just got these right now, so I'm going to make the decision to pass over them tonight. October, there's eight resolutions we have to go through. Our October meeting is before the MASC meeting, so we have time to still do, so we will do it at that point. In addition, if anybody wants to go, I, I think it's 8th, 9th, 10th, November 8th, 9th, and 10th, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, if anybody would like to vote any of the things, please get in touch with Danielle Gaylor, and we'll, we'll set that up for them to be able to go. If we have more than one person going, we'll also have to vote on, like, a speaker while we're, while we're there. Heidi can explain what that entails, if needed, as she was the person last year. So I just wanted to mention that, we're going to pass it over, and it'll be on the next meeting. Let's down to the next, next school committee meeting, Tuesday, October 24th, 2023, here at the middle high school library. On Monday, October 9th, Columbus State, all school buildings and offices are closed. Saturday, October 14th, here at the auditorium, in the auditorium is the town meeting at 9:00 AM, that was mentioned previously. Tuesday, October, I want to add one thing. Sunday, October 15th, is the Boosters Door-to-Door Drive. It's their biggest fundraiser of the year. They will go door-to-door, but there will also be communication where you can, I think you can Venmo them money, or they'll have ways that you can also send them money. It's their biggest fundraiser of the year. Then their meeting is the following Tuesday, October 17th. I want to say, nobody in the town holds this to me, but I believe the, the, a vote based on what happens at the town meeting could take place on Saturday, October 21st, but I don't know that for sure, but I'm just putting that out there. Again, it won't be school information related. I think that's all I have. So with that, unless anybody else has anything to add, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
You want to make a motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all so much, I appreciate it.